Okay, we're ready. Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Trouton Planning Commission for Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If we could have a roll call, please.
Apologize, I left the piece of paper in my bucket here. Commissioner Andrews.
Will not be here this evening.
Commissioner Minkoff.
Here.
Commissioner Leeny.
Here.
Commissioner Frigge.
Will not be here this evening.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Chair Stathenson.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Leeny will be leading us this evening. All right. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission this evening on a non-agenda item? All right, unmuted. Wish for an agenda item? Not seen anyone? Okay, and no agenda updates, just a packet of camera.
We have one agenda item that we're taking off the agenda tonight, the presentation for the Sandy Shuttle feasibility and downtown parking study. My co-presenter is feeling ill this evening, so we're going to come back and give that presentation to Planning Commission next month.
Okay. All right. So tonight's item will be LU zero zero one four dash two zero two four, and this is Cherry Park East Apartments. And this is a Type III quasi-judicial hearing. And before we open the the public record for this evening, I'd like to explain a little about the Planning Commission and the procedure that we will be following for the public hearing. The Planning Commission is an appointed seven-member volunteer body of Trouton citizens. Members of the Planning Commission are Trouton residents who've been appointed by the City Council. They serve four-year terms, they are strictly volunteers, and receive no pay for their services. The Planning Commission serves as a citizen committee for the review of land use applications and various land use-related matters within the city. Items which the Planning Commission consider include uses of land, subdivisions, major variances, land use policy plans, and development regulations. For some land use applications, the Planning Commission makes a final decision; for other applications, they simply are making a recommendation to the City Council who renders the final decision. Tonight's application is a Type III quasi-judicial hearing, and Planning Commission will be the deciding body, and the City Council will be the appellate body if there's an appeal. Quasi-judicial public hearings are held in accordance with Oregon law and procedures contained in the Trouton Development Code. The hearing proceeds as follows. City staff presents their report, which includes applicable criteria and standards for the matter under consideration in the land use application. All testimony and evidence should be directed towards these criteria. If you believe that other criteria in the Conference of Plan, Development Code, or other city land use applications, land use regulations apply, you must identify these criteria and explain why they apply to the decision. The Planning Commission accepts public testimony relating to the application. The applicant is allowed to speak first, followed by proponents, then by opponents, and then by any parties neutral to the application. An opportunity will be provided to anyone testifying to clarify any issues raised. All issues raised by a participant during the public hearing must be sufficiently clear and specific to allow the Planning Commission and other parties an opportunity to respond to those issues. Failure to raise an issue during this public hearing may invalidate a future appeal based on that issue. Prior to closing the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission must grant the request either by continuing the public hearing to a future date or by leaving the record open for at least seven days to omit only that specific additional written evidence or testimony. If the record is left open for the additional written evidence or testimony, any participant may file a written request for an opportunity to respond to new evidence submitted during the period the record was left open. If such a request is filed, the Planning Commission shall reopen the record to allow any person to raise new issues which relate to the new evidence, testimony, or criteria for decision-making. And as a final note, if you're wishing to speak this evening... Do we have cards?
We do, they're right here.
If you could fill out one of these cards, that would be very helpful, and remember to speak clearly into the microphone. All proceedings are recorded. Okay, before we open the public hearing, is there any... And this is a continuation for LU zero zero one four two zero two four. Is there any additional expertise, communication, bias, or conflict of interest anyone wishes to declare at this time? Okay. And this is a continuation of the hearing that was continued on October thirtieth
Correct.
of this year. So at this time, we will reopen case file LU zero zero one four dash two zero two four, Cherry Park East Apartments. Good evening, Mr. Rind.
Good evening. Let me share an iPad screen. All right. Why is that showing up? So we received a updated plan from the applicant. So here's a comparison compared to the plan that we saw in October. The only substantive change would be going from a ten-foot rear parking setback to a twenty-foot rear parking setback. So the twenty feet now is compliant with code and wouldn't require variance anymore. So instead of three variances being asked for you guys to make a decision on, we're just down to two. I've highlighted some of the changes that might strike you compared to the first plan we looked at. Again, that twenty feet is really the only item that significantly changes anything related to your decision. Other elements that have changed would be one less parking space in that middle parking aisle. A switch from twenty-six feet to twenty-five feet for that kind of parking aisle in the rear of the parking lot. And on the left side of the lot, you'll see an arrow saying "private outdoor space." In the first plan that we saw, that was not indicated as private outdoor space. And we have an additional measurement for just a general recreation area. So we have that three thousand feet in the upper right. In addition to it, there is a sixteen hundred square feet as well. So these items, they don't impact any elements of the code, it's all compliant, these small minor adjustments that have happened. So we'll switch to the variances, yeah?
Go back.
Sure.
Wasn't there parking space lost on the north side also?
There could be, yeah. Absolutely. Two spaces compared to the first plan you saw have been removed. So we're going from forty-five to forty-three spaces.
So it's not one, it's two.
Yeah. All right, we're going to fast-forward. Conditions of approval are all staying the same, there's been no additions or removals of those. The lot is still compliant, the zones are still the same from when we heard it last. So that brings us to the two variances. So variance request number one. The applicant has requested relief from the side yard setback requirement for the northern side yard. The Trouton Development Code minimum required side yard setback is twenty feet. The applicant requests a twenty-five percent reduction in the standard and asks for a fifteen-foot minimum required side setback. This is the same request as they made in the first hearing. Going through the findings, these should be a repeat or review from the last hearing. The demonstration of a special circumstance. The applicant has indicated that the subject property is oddly configured with an appendage located at the southeast corner of the lot in such a way that constrains development. The appendage is roughly three thousand square feet in area and roughly thirty feet wide. The minimum required rear yard setback for this appendage is thirty feet. Because the width of the appendage is roughly the same size of the required setback, the parcel contains roughly three thousand square feet of land that cannot be used towards housing a structure or parking area. The southeastern appendage makes the subject property uniquely shaped in a manner that is atypical of the general conditions of the surrounding area and creates difficulties for development. This criteria is met.
Can you, this is Commissioner Minkoff, can you point that... Oh, well, you answered my question. Point it out on a map. Thank you.
No worries. Criteria B, the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties or the surrounding neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Finding, within the narrative, the applicant affirms that reducing the northern side yard setback to fifteen feet will not be injurious to adjacent properties, the surrounding neighborhood, or be detrimental to the public welfare. The applicant's site plans indicate a wooden six-foot good neighbor fence to be installed along the border of the abutting parcels to the north, an additional wooden six-foot good neighbor fence to be installed at the boundaries of each ground-level unit. Not only will these fences contribute to site obscuration, but the fences dampen the sound of the tenants as well. With a fifteen-foot side yard setback, the proposed building will be at least forty-five feet from the nearest adjacent dwelling on the northern property line. A five-foot reduction in the required northern side setback is not anticipated to be detrimental to the public welfare nor be injurious to adjacent properties. Criteria C, the variance authorized will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the provision from which a variance is sought. The general purpose and intent of this section is to ensure that when high-density residential zone properties about differing residential zones, the abutting zone setbacks are considered in the determination of the subject property zone. If the variance is authorized, the proposed northern side setback is still greater than the side setback of the abutting zones. The abutting zones are LDR two and MDR, who have side yard setbacks of seven point five and five feet respectively. The applicant's proposed setback of fifteen feet is equal to double the required setback standards of the adjacent properties to the north, which considers the setbacks of the northern abutting zone. This criteria is met. And criteria D, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty with full compliance and to avoid or minimize the resulting hardship. Within the narrative, the applicant notes that the subject property has site constraints via the southeastern appendage that require a reduction in the north property line side yard setback. The applicant states that they considered shifting the project south, but are unable to do so due to other setback requirements, minimum private outdoor space requirements, and the necessity to provide adequate parking for tenants. The variance is the minimum necessary to relieve the constraints imposed by the southeastern appendage. This criteria is met. And our second variance request. The applicant has requested relief from the minimum required private outdoor space for upper-level units. The code states that upper-level units shall have sixty square feet of private outdoor space. The applicant requests for a thirty percent reduction from this requirement and asks to provide forty-two square feet of private outdoor space for upper-level units. Criteria A relating to demonstrating a special circumstance or condition. The applicant states that achieving the required sixty square foot, square feet of private outdoor space for each upper-level unit is practically challenging to achieve. The applicant argues that the provided forty-two square foot private outdoor space in the site plans are specifically designed to cantilever over the driveway in a safe, unobstructed manner. If the applicant were to achieve the sixty-foot, sixty-square-foot area, they have concerns related to the functionality of the garage below. The applicant further states that it is not practical, practically possible to provide a sixty-foot private outdoor space for the upper-level units, and therefore requests to provide forty-two square feet of private outdoor space. Approval criteria B, the variance authorized will not be injurious to adjacent properties or the surrounding neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. For the site plans and applicant narrative, the decks or balconies outdoor space impacted by this variance request are primarily visible from within the confines of the subject parcel. The applicant providing eighteen square feet less of balcony will be in no way injurious to adjacent property owners nor detrimental to the public welfare. Approval criteria C, the variance authorized will be consistent with the general purpose and intent of the provision from which a variance is sought. The general purpose and intent of the provision of providing private outdoor space is to provide an amenity for the tenants. Granting a thirty percent reduction in upper-level private outdoor space will still achieve the general purpose and intent of this provision as the amenity is still being provided in a practical and usable fashion. Additionally, the proposed development is providing recreation open space that surpasses the minimum requirement. Staff believes that the outdoor space lost by granting this variance can be made by the ample common outdoor space that is proposed to be provided, and it should say as such, this criteria is met. And variance approval criteria D, the variance is the minimum necessary to relieve a practical difficulty with full compliance and to avoid or minimize the resulting hardship. Per the applicant's narrative, the explanation of the special circumstance, the requested variance is the minimum necessary to relieve the demonstrated practical difficulty. As such, this criteria is met. Based upon review of the applicant's submittal, review of the applicable code and agency comments, staff recommends that Planning Commission vote for approval with conditions. Staff has prepared a draft findings of fact and final order document outlining how the decision criteria for this application were satisfied along with proposed conditions of approval. As outlined by the review entities, any subsequent approvals from the city shall not be issued until all conditions listed in the attachments are adequately addressed as determined by the appropriate review entity. Planning Commission reserves the right to amend the draft and proposed conditions unless other governing documents or agreements state otherwise. The conditions of approval are the same from when we met at the last hearing. Would anyone like me to go over them again?
No, thank you.
Great. That's it for my portion.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is it time for us or later?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Minkoff.
Thank you. I would like to know two, a couple things. One is, how does the southeast appendage actually restrict building on the north side? If we were actually talking about a southeast, let's say interference, pardon me, so that in that lot, some of the space were actually taken up with something that couldn't be removed, and therefore the whole structure had to be pushed an extra five feet north, I could understand that. But we're talking about a southeast additional property, additional space. So I'm wondering, why does that require the building, the whole structure to be pushed five feet further north?
So we're talking about the lot as a whole, we're saying additional appendage, but let's keep in mind, it's all one lot, it's all one parcel. That appendage is, for development purposes, adds three thousand square feet to what he can build density-wise. It's a unusual lot, you won't see many lots shaped that way. Based on the lot size, he can build to a certain density. However, the shape of the lot is not conducive to building to that density, which is, we'd argue, would be a special circumstance that could be seen before you today for approval.
Okay, I understand. So you have to take, you take that appendage into account when you're determining the total square foot, and therefore that allows you to build a certain density. The problem is, it's a little peninsula out there that really can't be built on.
That's right. It's pretty narrow, and based on setback requirements, it's essentially, I'll say, unbuildable in terms of structures. So it's an extra three thousand square feet, that's...
Was that an easement?
So it's an unusual lot shape.
Okay. My next question is related to the second request for adjustment, and that is, how was sixty feet of outdoor space originally decided upon and determined? And if sixty feet is the standard, is somehow was required by code, why should we allow them to reduce it to forty-two feet? And it always leads me to the question, is that something that at some later date, we should reconsider changing the code to say forty-two feet instead of sixty feet?
Yeah, great question, first off. As far as the actual reasoning behind the variance, I can let Tracy, the applicant, discuss that during his time. And I'm pulling up the slide that gets to where we got the sixty square feet, so one second.
I always have to think, well, I always do, think about why were, why was the code developed as it was for some purpose, there was some reason why it was set at sixty feet. It may have been set that way so many years ago, nobody can quite remember exactly what the purpose of sixty feet was, which is why I say, you know, I always challenge variances to an existing code in that manner. And if it was so many years ago that nobody can remember why sixty feet was important, maybe it ought to be changed to forty-two feet, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, it could be. I'm not sure when that piece of code was added. I'd have to look into it, and I'd be happy to. But regarding the Y sixty feet, the code provision eight one fifty B six B says, "Each upper-level unit shall have an attached outdoor private space, such as a balcony, of not less than sixty square feet in area. The area shall be enclosed, screened, or otherwise designed to provide privacy from adjacent units by walls, building offsets, or similar site obscuring screening." So that's how we got the sixty.
Right, because it's in the code.
Right.
But they want to make it forty-two feet?
Correct.
I understand that too. Okay, well... Yeah, I'd love to know how that sixty feet was determined as important.
Yeah, I can look into if we have any documentation on why, and follow up with you after the hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Allen?
If I remember correctly, this isn't the first person that looked at developing this property and not the only person that has attempted to develop it. And it being oddly shaped has been a a negative factor in actually developing.
Commissioner Wilcox?
I've got a couple of questions on the existing findings of fact. Finding three and finding five. I'm not clear on what the difference between those two are. One calls for a requirement of sixty, three calls for a requirement of sixty feet, and five calls for a requirement of twenty feet. But the answer to both is three hundred, two hundred and thirty feet. You've got two different questions with the same answer.
Yeah, so for this specific parcel, the number's going to be the same, but that's not going to be the same for every parcel, right? So minimum lot width, finding three and finding five. Minimum lot width, sixty feet at the front setback line. The front setback line could be different than what your minimum lot frontage measurement would be. It just so happens in this case, you know, the finding's the same, it's the same number.
So... So if the lot were tapered one way or the other, would it account for that? Okay.
It's a good question, though.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's it for staff.
Okay. All right. If there's no other questions for staff, I would invite the applicant to go forward.
Good evening, my name is Tracy Brown. Is that the last, do you need my address? One seven zero seven five Fur Drive in Sandy, Oregon, nine seven zero five five. So yeah, thank you very much. This is, as you're aware, this is a continuation of the hearing we had in October. And between that hearing and today, we did modify the site plan to, so it now complies with that eastern setback. You know, and as Nick mentioned, we did, there is a reduction of two parking spaces, one in that center aisle area, or the island, and then one on the north side. So we now have thirty-five parking spaces, and, you know, which does exceed the minimum requirement. You know, previous to the state climate-friendly rules, the city's minimum was thirty-five spaces, so we're, you know, close to that number, but would have exceeded it prior to those rules. I prepared a little presentation, if maybe Nick can bring that up, and I'll just go through some of what Nick already talked about. Right, so yeah, there's, so I, can I control that from here, Nick?
No, but I can just shift my laptop to you.
All right, thank you. Okay, so yeah, this is, you know, pick, just a rendering, kind of showing the project from an interior, and you can see those. the project from the interior, and you can see those upper floor, private outdoor space. Yeah, and part of the reason for that is, as you can see, the width of the project, there's some innies and outies required, so it wouldn't be feasible to extend that balcony any further east-west really, to pick up some additional square feet. And because of the height limitations that the city has and the garages, often it's the case where apartment complexes don't have garages, and so they wanted to provide really nice amenity for the residents. So with that garage, either for storage or for parking, there are that kind of physical limitation on how far out they can extend. I guess to answer the commissioner's question, you know, I was the planning director in the city of Sandy for 15 years and have been a planner for 30 years. That number of 60 square feet, I don't know, it's a number that came up with. It's probably to some degree arbitrary. But it is, you know, as Nick mentioned, it is in the code. I'm not sure you'll be able to find out why it was 60 square feet opposed to 40 square feet or 80 square feet. It's just a number that was selected probably. I know some cities in this area are starting to evaluate the need for that upper floor space in addition. You know, and these units will be pretty small units on the upper story, so we felt because of the limitations, it was warranted to request that variance. So again, we're just requesting the site development review for the 15-unit multifamily development and those two variances now. Wanting to construct two buildings, seven units in Building 1, which is on the north side, and eight units in Building 2, which is on the south side of the project. And there will now be a total of 43 parking spaces and the required recreation areas. And it's important to keep in mind, I guess, for the public as well, that apartments are permitted use in this zone, and there's not a lot of permitted uses, and apartments are one of those. And the project does comply with all other standards except those two variance requests. So this kind of shows, you know, the site, and as you see, the properties to the, it's on the upper part is the east, north is to the left of the site, and there's that appendage that sticks out. It's kind of an oddity. I don't know how that occurred. But you can see those structures above this property to the east are fairly close to this eastern property line, and they were granted a 15, or a reduction of the rear yard setback when that subdivision was plotted. So there could be 15 feet for this north unit, and you know, some of the other ones might be 20 feet. That, for reference, that appendage is 30 feet deep. So you can kind of use that as a scale to look at how far away those structures are. I just took some, you know, I wanted to just get a better handle on the fencing that's out there. So the appendage pretty much has the fence, chain link fence with slats. There's a portion in the middle that just has chain link fence. And then as you go further north, there's a wooden fence. And then on the north end of the property, that's primarily chain link. So the owner really wants to have a kind of consistent look and, you know, a look that he can maintain throughout the project or the, you know, the perpetuity of the project. And so he plans to build a new fence, a wooden fence around the entire perimeter inside his prop, inside the property line. We don't, you know, we'll kind of work with the property owners because we don't know exactly where those fences are relative to the property line. They could be on his property, they could be on their property. Hopefully, they're on their property. But anyway, that's kind of the reason for what he would like to do, to build that consistent fence, good neighbor fence, and to, you know, kind of contain the project in a consistent look. So this is the current site plan that Nick was sharing. We have the 15-foot setback on the north, the 20-foot setback on the east property line, and then there's a 10-foot setback on the south. And this is, you know, the garbage enclosure did stay at 15 feet, but the parking spaces did move to 20 feet away. This was some pictures that the applicant sent to me to share with you all. You know, he'll still need to kind of show exactly where these amenities will be included in that shared outdoor recreation area. Again, the standard is 200 square feet per unit of shared recreation area, and that's totals 3,000 square feet. And at least 50% of that needs to be an active recreation. And then any structure can exceed 10 feet. Exceeding 10 feet shall comply with the setbacks. So some of those, you know, probably in the upper right-hand corner, the play structure would have to be reduced in height, you know, because there's not a lot of room to comply with the setbacks because it will be in that kind of appendage area. But it'll be some amenities for the residents to utilize. Just some basic, I guess, responses to what we heard or saw in the public comments. The primary comment, I think, had to do with impacts to property values. I just wanted to point out, we didn't see any evidence to indicate the proposal would negatively affect property values. And I guess if anything, it's my conclusion that, you know, now with this project, there will be certainty about what happens in that, on that property. And, you know, the project is being proposed as a quality project in compliance, primarily with the code. Apartments are permitted outright, and the variance to the north property line is being reduced as well as, and we are now complying with a setback on the east side. So the conclusion is, you know, we've spent considerable time fine-tuning this proposal, and we heard, you know, the staff, I guess, in their concerns about approving or recommending approval of that eastern variance. So we made that change. Now, again, apartments are permitted in this district. It does comply with the majority of the code standards. You know, it has been thoughtfully designed, I believe. You know, he's trying to maximize parking as much as possible, even the code, even though the code doesn't require as many spaces as he's proposing. You know, he just feels that that is essential to having a, you know, a quality project that is both leasable, with hopefully longer-term folks wanting to live there, and it's just better for the community really. Because there's really no other parking right next to this property because of the classification of the street. So we have reviewed all of the conditions. You know, there was a minor condition about the height of the garbage enclosure, and that was just a omission that, you know, we are proposing a six-foot cedar fence around the garbage enclosure in compliance with the code. So we don't have any heartburn about any of the conditions that are being proposed by staff as well as the other reviewing entities. So with that, I would ask if you had any questions for me.
Commissioner Leeny?
I have a question. So, am I correct that Lot 5800 is owned by the same?
Which one is Lot 5800?
The house?
No, it's not, I don't think.
Oh, Mike kept on that one?
I don't think so, no. It's also a zone high-density residential.
Commissioner Allen?
So, the way I look at it is, when we're coming up with code, right, we just don't think of everything. And the whole point of variances is to give us a way of dealing with things that weren't considered when code was written, right? A chance to not do something stupid. Not that we won't try. There's a chance. And so, what I kind of wonder about, and this, there's two things. One is, the play structure, should we really be limiting the play structure to 10 feet? But that's kind of probably more a question of the neighbors, right? Whether that would bother them or not. However, I would need to know from you whether, if the play structure could be more than 10 feet, would you mind it?
No, I don't think so. I mean, we were just looking at the code and we, you know, we didn't request a variance to that, but we're sure we'd be glad to accept one if that was your decision.
No, some were sending, so you could just like build in the sky, right? And then the other question is, this was brought up by Commissioner Leeny last time. And I thought about it, and I kind of wondered about this too, and maybe answered the question, but I wasn't sure. On the one unit, where it's just a ground unit, would you prefer to have a two-story just like the other ones? Because I think the reason for the one unit is to transition in property types just to the north of that.
Yeah, the one unit, I believe, is two, has two levels. There's just not a second unit above that as a third unit. So I guess, is, I don't know what you're asking. Would we prefer to have 16 units as opposed to a maximum of 15 units?
Correct.
You know, I'm sure he would love that. You know, and the building is designed, you know, it won't be finished because, you know, you can't provide another unit, but it could be adapted if it's possible.
In the future, right?
Well, if, yeah, the code changes or there's some provision to allow an increase in density.
Well, are we allowed to do a variance?
You can't do a variance for density.
No.
No, it's not allowed.
Well, I appreciate it. It was a thought.
Yeah, and part of the reason for the, you know, the, I guess, regarding this variance to the north at 15, you know, that reduction from 20 to 15, it has to do with, you know, there isn't a unit there, so are we really, it's not a three-story building directly next to those properties. So there, yeah, there's some interpretation of that variance even, if that makes sense.
Right. Okay, so can they have a two-story unit there?
They...
Good point.
Well, they have a, basically, an unfinished unit.
Right, my question is, do they have a finished two-story unit there?
That way it's still 14.
So it's two stories, because in this section, so your amount of stories impacts what the setback requirement is. So in this specific spot, the adjacent properties are split-zoned, right? So the MDR zoning, which is kind of those two lower lots, have a certain requirement based on three floors, if you're building three floors of multifamily. However, here, sorry, you can't see anything I'm doing. Right here is, I think it's LDR 1, and then if this were a three-story structure, it would have a different setback requirement. I would kind of throw it off. So I think that was a big part of the reasoning to keep it to, and also just to maintain the 15 dwelling units to be compliant with code.
Because most of the structures are three, they are three levels, ground and two above. That one, 106, their second one on the north side is only one unit, but it's ground and one level above.
Yeah, it's surrounded by the other types.
Yeah.
It just doesn't make sense.
You said you were missing something.
Yeah, what I'm missing is...
But what you're saying...
Why can we not allow that to be habitable?
Because you can only have, we can only approve 15 units.
Right, but if it's habitable, but by the same unit, I think that's what Commissioner...
So there's no garage under that unit, right?
No, there is.
There is a garage? So, garage and a unit. The property that that, and nothing above it?
Yeah, there's a garage with some of the unit at that ground level, and then there's living space above the garage, but nothing on that third level. So it's only two levels of habitation and one unit.
But it's surrounded by three levels of habitation and most of it's...
Because the abutting property is zoned differently. Okay, so if you allow that to be inhabited, right? At upper level, you're changing the setback.
Which could be a variance, right?
A very serious variance.
So a separate unit wouldn't be a variance, couldn't be a variance. But if it's the same unit, then it could be a variance, right?
Yeah, it would be, it would be a pretty significant variance because of the abutting zone.
Yeah, because you've got 15 single-level units, and then you've got a unit that has vacant space by it, right?
And what would your variance, what would it be, 15 or 20?
For the setback?
Yeah.
Jeez. Off the top of my head, I don't know. I'd have to look.
So we're talking about, Pac Lot 52 is what causes this?
Well, that whole site is currently 20, and we reduced it to 15. So you're already max.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any difference.
No, you've, your variance would be greater because the setback would be more. The requirement would be more.
The setback on the entire north side is 20 feet.
It is now, because it's two-story there. Where in the butts to the, what, the M2?
MDR and...
LDR 1.
Yeah, the 1. Right, so the setback for 1 is greater.
It's greater than 20?
I don't think so.
It may be 20.
I think it would be 20. I mean, I think I... In terms of the setback, I had made the case in my narrative that, because the majority of that north line has the, would only, I believe, require 15 feet because it has a sideyard setback of five feet. It's the other property, 3300, that triggers the 20-foot setback. And interpretation was made that the greater standard controls. So we accept that. So that 20-foot controlled that north, the entire north line, even though I think it's about 60% of it or more. Actually, it would have been 15 feet by code, I believe.
Sounds right to me.
Yeah. So, that was part of my argument in my narrative discussion. Anyway, we accept the maximum density, you know, at this point. I don't think there's anything that can be changed about that. If the code does change to allow increase in density, you know, we'd gladly like to build that out, but I don't think there's any...
I'm actually wondering from a slightly different perspective, this is Commissioner Minkoff, if you didn't have that appendage where the density requirement had been dropped to 14, but having that appendage actually allows you to go to 15?
It does, yes.
That would be accurate.
So I think that concludes my presentation unless you have other questions for me.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Wilkoff?
I have a few, actually.
Okay.
You actually covered one of my questions, but I wanted to back up to... You actually covered one of my questions, but I wanted to back up to my source, just, just to cover it. On page 22 of your narrative, this is in regard to the fence on the east side, that says, "A side obscuring fence," the grammar is kind of weird, but I'll get through it. "A side obscuring fence will, is already constructed a portion of this boundary. The applicant will complete the side obscuring fence, also the rest of the boundary as required." I know, at the previous hearing, I remember Mr. Rick Rector, who's in lot two, I know he specifically requested that you put a fence adjacent to his fence. So I'm glad to hear that you're going to do full fence end-to-end on the east side.
Yeah, so this is the fence you're referring to here. And I guess the only caveat to this particular fence, since it is solid fence, you know, and talking to the owner about it, it kind of depends where that fence is exactly. You know, he'll have that surveyed. It, it would be his preference in working with the neighbor if the fence is like right on the line, to put his boards on the inside of that fence. So he doesn't have to put new posts right next to those posts.
Oh, right.
But that's just kind of a logistics thing. The rest of it, he wants to have the solid, you know, good neighbor fence, wood fence. But this would be the only area that, in the ideal world, he would put his boards on the inside, so he can maintain those boards, and it would be kind of a double fence of wood, but he would have the control of the inside of that fence, but... So he'll work with that property owner and the other property owners on, you know, the fencing.
That would be tricky, leaving a work area between the two.
Right.
Another question I had on your, you have a copy of the side map?
Yeah.
On key number 19, it's identified as a...
Got a bigger one?
Double connection EV charging station.
Yep.
And it's located, appears to be located between parking space 24 and 25. But the problem I see is, space P24 is in front of 102's garage.
Okay, my understanding is going to put charging stations in each of the garages. And, you know, based on the current code, there's an additional requirement to at least have the conduit available. So up to, I think it's 40%, can be charged. But I think that's, I think that's showing it at the garage, or next to the garage.
Okay, so that, that's just one example. There will be several.
Yeah, no, each of those, each unit will have a station, at least. And then there will be, you know, the provision for, um, to make sure it meets the, the right number. So, you know, 40%, so if there is a garage, one in each garage, that meets the 40%. So that, that's, my understanding and talking to the owner, that's what his plan is, to have one, a charging station, wired.
Eight out of 43 isn't 40%.
Oh, you're right. I was thinking of eight out of 16 uni, or 15 units, but you're right.
Okay, I was hoping the property owner would be here, so he might be able to help me out with this question. It's like, a couple meetings back, I asked you about this, and I have an issue with unit 106 not having a unit 206, because on the floor plans, you're showing a fully built-out apartment on the second story of 106. Anybody that looks at that floor plan sees an apartment?
Well, it's part of the apartment on the ground.
It's on the, on the second floor. So anybody looking at that floor plan is going to see a 16th unit.
No, it's my understanding that that 106 is, includes ground level and second level as one apartment. There's no third level to that, like the other buildings will have. So there's not, yeah, there's only 15 units being proposed. That should be reflective on the floor plans.
Okay, well, I'm looking at, okay, I'm looking at the north, the north group of four units, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, 105, 205 is the ADA unit, 105 is ADA. 205 is accessed by way of an exterior stairwell, stairway, staircase. 106 is immediately to the west of that. It's the same as, it's exactly the same as 1 through 4, 7, 8, except you're saying that 206 doesn't exist.
Right.
But on the floor plan, it exists.
Yeah, I don't have the floor plans with me, but, yeah, I don't, not disagreeing with you, but I don't, I don't think that's the case. I believe there's only a single unit in that building.
Can anybody bring up the floor plans?
Sure.
I mean, there's an unapproved space above it. Yeah, it's unfinished up there.
Right.
Well, there's nothing unfinished looking, it's not unfinished looking on the floor plan, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I guess the difference would be there's, there's, you know, not going to be, you know, drywall, fixtures, finishing, interior finishing. It will show as, on the floor plan as a space, but there's no interior finishings of it.
And that will all be reviewed and double-checked when they come in for building permits as well?
So, so what you end up with is an interior stairway going to an empty space, a outdoor space, outdoor balcony, adjacent to an empty space.
Well, it's, I believe it's the third level that's the unfinished space, not the second level with the balcony.
No, it's the second story.
Now, let's take a look at this. There's the, there's 106, second story. So then there's the stairway. Second floor. They're showing finished. Let's see, what is this?
That's, that's third story. It's on the, it's only on the second, on the back half. If you're looking second story, scroll it back down. The thing that distinguishes then is the, the two that are blue highlighted, and then 106, or what would be 206, it's not highlighted in blue, but it's otherwise nearly identical. That's the third story.
Right.
That floor plan shows three units and not four, for the third level.
But they're all connected. Shouldn't there be a split between 205 and 207?
Yeah, the bill, the building will be a continuous roof line, but intent is not to have a finished second apartment in that building because of the density part.
So you're showing three units up there connected?
Right.
Yeah.
In reality, what you're saying is that there's a gap between...
One and two.
I see what you're saying. There should be a blank space between one and two.
Or else there isn't.
So are those, you go up to that third story again, next?
Third story?
Are those, um, they're not numbered.
No.
And I didn't, I didn't develop the, um, floor plans, the architect did, but at the direction of the owner.
So I'm wondering if in actuality, there is a 206 and there's not a 205?
No, I don't, I think that's, we've got the numbering right, I believe, based on what he said.
But you see what I'm saying, is there should be a gap.
This drawing would be consistent with that.
Right, no, I see what you're saying.
Connection between them.
So that, yeah, that'll have to be clarified, because there's only allowance for 15 units. We understand that. That's what the approval would be, so as you go through, as the building plans are reviewed, that will need to be clarified.
So then are you saying that if we added a fourth unit here, that the one, second one from my right, would actually just be a blank box?
Yeah.
There would be no dividers?
Which means it is unfinished.
Right, it'd be an unfinished, you could call it an attic or floor. Unusable space or, you know, living space. So it won't be...
Well, that's, that's correct, because there are only three third-story units, three, three stories.
Right, but if you look at your map, where 106 falls in there between 105 and the one, or let's say 205 and 207?
It should be a blank in there.
There should be a blank up there. So you're showing one unit on the end and then two on the side?
No, because one, six, six, seven, eight are all, six, seven, eight are all the same. It's 105, 205 that is different. It's only a two-story.
What he was showing is that there's something about this one, this one, this one.
The one, the one on the far right doesn't show, doesn't show a third story, because it doesn't have a third story.
Well, right, but he's saying that there should be a vacant space between those two endpoints. There should be one up here.
Why?
Because you're, you're showing third story on those.
Those are three stories. Those are all three stories.
I see what he's saying.
Six, seven, eight are all three-story.
The one on the right would be associated with 106, 107, 108. 105, at the end, doesn't have the third level.
Yeah.
Well, it has a third level, it just doesn't, you know, be a blank space.
It doesn't even have a third level.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't have the third level.
If you look at the outside elevation, there's nothing on the back side.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very good reviewing of plans, I would say. Are there other questions? I'm sorry, I've been not able to answer everything correctly, but the, yeah, the intent is to only have 15 units. Yeah, as permitted. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone wishing to testify as a proponent to the application? Anyone online, unmute yourself, wish to testify as a proponent? Anyone in chambers? Anyone wishing to testify as an opponent to the application? There we go, all right.
What a winner. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Do you want me to... Do you want me to state my name and...
Please.
Okay. Kathy Jones. My address is 1495 Southwest Wright Place. And I am, hold on a second here, I'll take notes. Okay, first thing I wanted to do was mention the article that was in the Troutdale Champion last week regarding the construction that's going to be happening on 257th, which, for the enhanced pedestrian crossings and the bike boxes, which I think is a good thing that we need. And I noticed in the background, it says here, "Southwest 257th is one of the most heavily-traveled Multnomah County roads in Troutdale." And certain times of the day, around 3:30 in the afternoon, 257th, the traffic going south is backed up clear down the hill. And when we add things like this, the pedestrian cross, crosswalks and the large bike lanes, it causes distractions for drivers, which is going to make things a lot more complicated to maneuver. But on top of that, adding an apartment complex. I just kind of wanted to bring that up, because it, this is a very heavily-traveled road, and it gets pretty nasty out there certain times of the day. One question I wasn't quite sure of, I heard, are there 43 parking spaces for 15 units or 35?
Total of 43.
43, okay, that's quite a few. My main concern, then, I'll just move on to this, is the recreational area. I am lot number three, directly behind where they want to put this recreation area, the place structure, the barbecues, picnic tables. That is, it's, I, it sounds like it's a 10-foot setback on that from the east property line?
20.
20.
So it's 20, okay, I guess that isn't too bad. But I just, I, it, it does concern me, because I don't want to listen to people talking and playing music and dogs barking and smelling of smoke from the barbecue and from other things. I've worked very hard and spent quite a bit of money to create a peaceful backyard environment, and I fear it will change. This will make things a little different. And it, as it was stated, that it shouldn't affect my property value, but it will affect the chance, it will affect things when I, when and if I go to sell it. You know, people are going to look at that and think, oh, I don't know if I want to live behind a playground, you know, party area. So, um... Everybody has a different idea of what's reasonable noise levels to put up with. I get up at 5:30 in the morning, or go up, therefore I go to bed at 8:30 at night. So I'm hoping, I'm concerned with how late people are going to be hanging out in this recreational area, barbecuing and sitting around the picnic table. The applicant said that a wood fence would reduce the noise. I'm, I'm a little apprehensive to believe that. I'm, I don't see how just wood, unless it's going to be insulated, you know, double, double wall of some kind. Let's see, my other issues, this is probably more for the, um, the applicant. Can I ask him questions or...
Just ask your questions.
Okay, okay. I'm curious to know whether subletting will be allowed in this complex unit? Okay, okay. Um, I'm curious to know whether subletting will be allowed in this complex unit?
Here you go.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Oh.
They want to be answered directly.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, also, let's see, will smoking be allowed in the units or outside? And if it's not in the units, will there be a designated smoking area? And who will be responsible for issues that arise with noise and rules? Will someone be available 24/7 to address these concerns after hours? Let's see. It, you know, I'm not, I'm not bothered by these kind of things. You know, especially like play structures for kids. I understand they kind of need stuff like that. But it, it does just bring to me a party atmosphere when you start adding, you know, the barbecue and the picnic tables and, hey, bring out your Bluetooth and let's sit out here all night because it's, you know, 80 degrees outside. It's a great evening. But, um, other than that, I just, um, I'm, I know this is going to happen. There's really nothing any of us can do about it. I've already got the construction shed and the equipment storage containers. Uh, tent power has already been set up out there. And, um, the question is, can we make it sustainable and equitable for both sides of the fence? And I really hope that my concerns are taken to, to heart here and it doesn't fall on deaf ears.
All right. Anyone else online wishing to testify as an opponent to the application? Anyone in chambers wishing to testify as an opponent?
Hi, my name's Travis Perella and I live at 1320 Southwest 257th Avenue. And I haven't, some of this, I'm not a developer, so I don't understand some of the wording. But in my comment last week, it says, Nick wrote it, I didn't, my, my concerns didn't meet any specific code criteria. Can you give me an example of that? Because I don't know what, how I would know codes to.
Sure, so.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the first hearing we went over, um, more or less every slide that had TDC followed by a number, that'd be a code criteria. So for the staff report and for my responding to public comments, I respond based on the code. More kind of subjective items, this would be the more appropriate spot to, and commission to have them address it. Um, because my position and what I do is, it's strictly development code-based. That would gives me my authority, right to act. So anything outside of that isn't my realm and it's more appropriate for the commission.
So is a variance of code then?
Uh, yes, it's a land use action and there's code approval criteria that we discussed tonight.
So I, I wonder, did the builder not know about these variances before he designed this project? Because why would he step over the boundaries? We wouldn't be here right now if he didn't. You know what I mean? I mean, then, uh, another thing is in, in danger or injurious to us, you know, loss of property value, wouldn't that be injurious to the people? And if it is, I think we should get an outside realtor, a non-biased realtor to come in and, you know, make a statement on what the impact would be on these, these variances being closer to our properties. I mean, I lived there 37 years and, um, worked really hard to pay the house off and it's like, I feel like I'm having money taken out of an IFRD account or something by this being built closer. So I don't feel that it's fair in that way. Um, and that's probably not anything code I'm talking about, but that's how I feel. Um, so is that injurious if it's gonna diminish our property values? And if so, can we get in outside, you know, person there?
There is the zoning of the property, okay, and so the zoning allows for certain things. Right? That can go in and some things can go in, they're permitted, they automatically go in, some things are conditioned, some things are not allowed. And then we have setbacks that we deal with, right? The density that the state decides, how many units they want on a parcel and all of these things. And so there's, it's kind of like a box.
Right, and you're trying to fit everything in.
It fits into a box really kind of, or it doesn't. Now, um, as far as like injurious, if something, um, there is criteria for that and there's things that we can say, okay, this is injurious because of this and land value is actually not one of them that this body can consider.
So I feel like then that his gain is our loss then? Is that what it comes down to? That's what it sounds like to me.
I don't know that, um, I don't know that it's someone's gain and it's someone's loss.
That's why I'd like to get an outside opinion on it, so we can know that.
But I guess what I'm saying is we can't consider the property value. This body can't.
That doesn't seem right, does it? I mean, just by logic.
I.
I understand what you're saying, but to me that just doesn't seem right.
Right.
But it's, okay.
It, it's not something that, that we, we can consider. There's certain things we can consider and there's things that we can't. And, um, so it's kind of, frankly, it's, you've got somebody that owns the property and wants to develop it and it's zoned a certain way. So we're trying to figure out a way to do that.
Right.
And have it fit into the rest of the neighborhood. That's kind of our job.
I was, I was wondering too about the house that's on the southwest corner. It's an occupied lot with the house on it. Why is it zoned high-density residential? There's a house there already. I mean, who zoned it like that? I know it's Multnomah County probably, but why would they do that?
The zoning basically was something that was called A2.
Okay.
Uh, prior to being high-density residential. And anything basically that is on a corridor like this is going to be zoned that way.
Okay.
So it's a residential use, so it's okay, but if it got redeveloped, it would basically be mandated. And I personally have a problem with this, but I'm working within the law.
Yeah.
Where if it was redeveloped, it would be substantially more units on that parcel than what is there today.
Right, right. Okay, thank you for helping me understand that.
Not to, uh, not to get in the weeds of something like that, but, uh, if you have like a single-family house like in that situation you're talking about, it's existed there for years and then the city goes by and changes zones. Um, through some, could be a sweeping change, it could be just a parcel. The house is allowed to change or allowed to exist as it is. It's called non-conforming. So it was previously allowed to exist there. The zones changed. But, because it previously was approved to exist there, even though the zone changed, it can still exist.
Okay.
But once that house changes, then it has to conform to current standards.
Changes as in torn down or reconstructed?
If the, if the use is like discontinued, so it no longer operates as like a single-family dwelling,
Yeah.
then it would have to conform to current standards.
Uh, one of my other concerns is the fence, the wood fence. We're up on top of the hill. We get severe winds up there. There's an existing chain link fence for most of the property. It's been there about 40 years. It still is there. It's going to be there for another 40. I would think that we, it would be nicer to have a stable fence like that left there rather than have a wood fence. We know what these high winds out here do to fences. They destroy them. And I, I, you know, possibly put the slats in them too, if they wanted to make it fancier looking. But I just think it makes sense to have something that we can rely on being there that's sturdy, whereas the wind can eat up a wood fence.
I guess to put you on the spot.
Okay.
Okay. What, what is a fence that, that you feel would be better than what is being presented?
The fence that is there. The fence that's in place right now. And if you wanted to fancy it up, it's standard chain link. But if you wanted to fancy it up, you could put the slats in, you know how they put these plastic slats in to make them look real nice and, I mean, I think that personally, I think that that would be a more stable way to go, more reliable, less cost on his end.
Is that a six-foot fence, is their name?
I believe it's.
Five. Is it?
Do you know? What's that?
Six.
Six, it's six, then, yeah. It, it just seems like a sensible way to go. So, um, oh, what else we got? I don't know. Sorry, I'm not more prepared. I don't, I get up there and don't know what to say, so. The, I'm not quite understanding the, the unit that's going to be empty on top, correct, on the north side? Why, why do they have to build that unit even? Why can't they, is that something that they, is required for some? I don't quite understand what the cause of that is.
I'm not the applicant that I believe that these are connected roof lines. And so it would be substantially more difficult to break them up.
Okay.
Um, and probably a significant higher cost than just walling this thing in and having it empty.
Okay. Since, since it's zoned HDR, is he required to do 15 units?
Uh, not 15, but you are required to do a minimum, uh, density. So I, I think 15 is the max. I'd have to look up what the min is allowed, but it is certainly more than one.
I just wonder why possibly you could go with a couple less units and not worry about the variances and, you know, make everybody happy. I know it's all about money, but, but I, I just think, you know, I'm trying to look out for the neighborhood and my own cell. So that's, that's one question I had. I know that he, he's going to make more money if he has more units. But if you had a couple less, could we suck these variances up somehow? Could it be rearranged to, to work better for everybody?
Well, I was going to say, which variance are you?
I'm talking specifically about the one on the north side. That's my property. And then the one on the south side too. That, he, they're not doing one on the east side, right, now?
Correct.
So the, those two variances I'm concerned about. And why couldn't that somehow?
So just the north side is having a setback variance? There's no south side variance?
Oh, that's right. The other one was in, within the, the complex, right?
Right, it's like kind of those upper-level buildings.
Yeah, yeah, I got you, sorry. But, so yeah, I'm talking about the north side. Why couldn't things be adjusted where we? I mean, you know, I, obviously I don't like the idea of apartments going in there. But I would rather they could work with this and just at least keep what the variance is.
Yeah, and of course, the original plan, we don't even know what that would have looked like. It was going to be.
Right, and what Alex was going to do was 55 and older and, uh, fourplexes.
Pardon me?
Alex was going to do 55 and older living and fourplexes. So some of the people on the east side bought their houses and had them built on the pretense that that was going to be a much smaller project. I've talked to, uh, most of them on the east side and they said that, you know, when they built their homes, they asked what was going to be in the field and they said it's going to be a 55 and older, you know, much, you know, not as high up, not three floors and. I, I'd talked to Alex Mock about it before, the project he was going to do, that he started. And it was going to be a lot different than what's going on now. So, and that's why the driveway traffic study changed. He wasn't going to have to, he had a traffic study done and the driveway he had now was going to work for it. That's why now there's another, the driveway's changed.
Right, I, I guess I would say, I think it was 2018.
Somewhere right in there.
Right, when the project came up before and the only thing I would say is as far as the congregate housing piece, there wasn't any design submitted as far as height.
Okay.
Or, or not.
Yeah, it was just talked between us and whatnot. That's why, that's what I understand, so.
It was just, that was what was potentially going to go in and that's how it was, it was designed at that time.
Yeah, okay. So that, the fence, I think, would be a really big concern of mine and also the variance. I, you know, I don't want the five feet, five feet. If there's any way to, I, there's probably not, but I just had to express my concern. I feel better about it, so, you know, it's all I can do is be here and, you know, I worked hard to, to, to own the house and want to protect it as much as I can, so. That's where I'm at with it. Thank you guys.
Well, I'm almost 100 years old, but I'm still walking. I'm at 1460 Southwest 257 and thank you, Janet. The dog park is the biggest thing that's bothering me. Uh, we have no, uh, control over the person who is renting the units. Uh, how do we know what kind of people are coming in and, and do the dogs have their shots? Uh, are they vaccinated? If they're not, I will report them to animal control. Uh, we, we don't, they don't tell us anything. I'm very opposed to that. I'm opposed to the, uh, play area that Janet mentioned. The noise would, my bedroom window faces that area. My white fence keeps the coyotes out that are in the end of that dog park, so-called dog park. And another neighbor has disabled children. The dogs smell and the noise from the play area, it's not going to be fun. I'm dismayed at the proposal to build the enormous rental structure shown on proposal map that would highly detrimental to our community. It is recorded and known of rental people causing fatal fires, destruction of property and extreme noise. Again, I say detrimental to our beautiful community. I've been there 40 years. I built all the fences. I trained horses there for 30 years. And I know the wind. It pushed me back on my hands and knees, all the way back, and I weigh 120 pounds, back to my house. The proposal, enormous rental house with project, well, approximately 45 cars running in and out, approximately 90, figure two people per car plus inhabitants will create continual physical and mental problems to all who have adjoining property, talking to all my neighbors. And, um, that's about it. I'm very upset about it. And I, I hope something will be done. Thank you for the time. Any questions? Oh, you're going to get me.
Yeah, do you need a handout?
Okay, anyone else wishing to testify as an opponent? Any neutral parties wishing to testify this evening? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the book, Senator.
Do you want to do applicant rebuttal?
Do you wish to rebut?
Maybe I'll just say two minor things.
Sure, come forward.
Tracy Brown, yeah, just regarding the concern about 257. You know, we did, we do have a permit from Multnomah County for that access, so, you know, they've considered how that access will function in that permit. I guess regarding the fencing, um, like I said, we're, you know, he's going to figure out where those fences are out there. He feels the best for his project is a wood, good, good neighbor fence. So good neighbor fence is with the boards on both sides potentially, you know, so it does allow some level of wind blow-through. And, um, I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Motion to close? Okay, we have a motion to second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Public hearing is closed. Okay. If this was just straight, high-density apartments, right? How many units would we be putting on here?
As in like, what's the allow?
Maximum?
Max.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
So they're building, they're maximizing the density.
Isn't, isn't minimum eighty percent?
I can check what the min is. It's, uh, it's based on lot size.
I thought it was just a straight eighty percent at max.
I guess I can start. Somebody wanna start? What? Does somebody wanna start or do you want me to start?
Why?
I have a question. Okay.
Regarding their property, because they're on two fifty-seven, right, mentioning this property. They change use of their property. It all just is the same, generally, right?
Yes.
Right, so it does not depreciate the value of the property. Because once the use changes, their values don't lose in this property for developer, because it will have to be developed.
To that. To that density level.
Right.
Yeah. And, and that's a good point. We don't obviously consider property values.
Right.
So I'm, I'm hearing from the state that they wanna increase density, right? I hear that more than what was decided on in House Bill two thousand one, which is twenty nineteen, right? The twenty nineteen, two thousand one House Bill, has that changed this at all? Are we, are we concerned about future changes?
Well, the density level's been changed to accommodate current code. Okay, so this would, um, two thousand one, and what was the second one?
Uh, the middle housing one?
The middle housing plan, okay?
Right.
So those have changed, um, the density for these properties and those have been stayed down.
Yes, and those mandates for middle housing do not apply to high-density residential zones. So when we talk about middle housing, we're talking about, um, extra density in, um, zones primarily for single-family dwellings.
Right, but this meets current. I guess my point is this meets all current code.
All current code.
Okay.
And if I could, I just wanna respond quickly to, um, the, the minimum density is eighty percent.
Well, I'm not worried about current code so much as future code, but maybe that's just another bridge to cross later.
Well, we don't consider future code. We're just like today's code.
Yeah.
I have, uh, two things, um, to consider. One, I think the, um, I'm having trouble with the argument that the shape of the lot, uh, is a hardship. Um, that one's a little tough for me. Because I think that lots are shaped different all the time and, and we usually have to find a way to work within that. Where I do see the benefit to the community is the amount of parking that the applicant's providing. And I think that, that is a, a benefit not only to the residents that live there, but to the adjacent property owners as well. Because I can already see people parking on this right place and other streets and walking around to get to these units if there wasn't any parking. Um, and I know that, you know, we also, um, heard about noise and things and, uh, the noise ordinance, I believe, is, is standard, that's ten PM. Which is pretty standard and someone was asking that question, so I believe it is, what, seven AM to ten PM? That would be the noise conditions and, this is a standard setback for the properties that are to the east. There's, the applicant's not asking for variance here. And this modified proposal does take us from forty-five to forty-three. But forty-five was over the required number of spots, correct?
So it's forty-three. But there's no max.
Right. Over the minimum, I should say. Anyone else have anything? Michelle?
I just wanna mention that, uh, I actually do see the parking spots as a good thing. I remember, um, going to various apartment buildings around the city to deliver gifts during the holidays and it was very hard to find parking to do so. And then, um, along with others, John, you might have been involved too, going and helping with the kids with the bicycles.
Right.
Right, parking is a problem, right, in your standard, standard place. So having a, uh, and we know that a lot of people convert their garages into, you know, storage. And so having the extra space is just means less clutter, so I have to agree with Chair Stafford's take on that.
This is Commissioner Minkoff?
Go ahead, Commissioner Minkoff.
Thank you. A, a personal note, and that is, I feel badly for the individuals who have testified that are living adjacent to this property. I too, many years ago, lived in Los Angeles, bought a house that was one house in from an extremely, um, well-traveled road in Southern California, Los Angeles, and didn't realize at the time I purchased that the, that the property adjacent to mine, which was right on that major boulevard, was of, was of course zoned similarly to this property. And the owners, uh, well, the purchaser tore down a single-family residence and put up a, an apartment building, a, a four-story apartment building right next to my residence. And that, we weren't informed of, of this and I feel also badly that, that the residents maybe weren't, uh, told that they were moving adjacent to a property that was zoned for multifamily residences. But it is. So while I feel badly, it's, it's the way it is and people need to consider when they make a purchase, what is, what are they buying? And what kind of property are they buying next to? The one thing that the property owner, the contractor, did to the property adjacent to mine was he built a, a ten-foot brick wall. And I'm not saying that, I mean, whatever the owner decides to do is, has to be within code and that's fine, but maybe, uh, the, the contractor might, or the owner might consider something other than a, a good neighbor fence. I know what a good neighbor fence is. There's, you can see through from one property to the other property, but might consider, I know they have these fabricated, uh, faux brick walls that are ten feet high. There's one behind a commercial property that I own that separates my commercial property from an apartment building. And it's very private and definitely cuts down on noise substantially, so. But we can't, we can't force the property owner to do that. We can only say, you know, what is the code and make sure that they're complying with code. But it, wanting to be, um, building a wood fence that is a good neighbor fence, if, if the owner is definitely concerned about being a good neighbor, particularly with that playground area, which I think is a really nice amenity for that apartment complex, I understand how noise could be a problem for the neighbor. So, um, like I say, I'll just summarize, say, I, you know, I, while I feel badly for the, the adjacent neighbors, this is owned for multifamily use and has been, I guess, for quite some time. Thank you.
So what is side setback on this property?
The side yard? What's the side setback?
Yeah.
Uh, so it is fifteen on the north, which is the variance, and then ten on the south, which is complying with code.
So what determines side setback? So they're asking for a variance from twenty to fifteen. So what determines that that is not the side setback and it's already a fifteen?
Uh, the code, I suppose, that's what determines what it is.
Right, so it's the adjacent zoning, um, to this property that set the, um, the twenty-foot setback that they're reducing to fifteen because the adjacent, the adjacent zone property was low-density residential, which has, um, you know, a greater, a greater buffer to protect, you know, the single floors.
I can read off the code section if you'd like me to.
Well, I just was thinking, okay, you get your front setback, your back, your sides, and what determines that this is, is not a side setback? Okay. As opposed to a, a back or a front?
Uh, um, in this part, uh, for this parcel, the frontage would be the front. Um, so directly behind it, being the east would be the rear. And then the two sides.
Okay, yeah, so that's why I was saying that.
Okay.
That's a fifteen.
Right.
A normal setback, side yard setback is fifteen, but this one is twenty and they're asking for sixteen.
Heard a lot about fences. And, um, we just want some discretion there.
I mean, the applicant is proposing a six-foot tall wooden good neighbor fence. I mean, they, they could consider doing more.
Right. So I guess the question is, you know, it was brought up, would, uh, would you consider a chain link with slats or something of that nature?
Just point, point of order. If, if you would like the applicant to come back up to answer that question, you would need to open up the.
I know, I was just thinking about just putting in as an option.
Okay.
Okay.
More options, the better.
That the applicant would work with the community to determine the best screening that be acceptable.
I think, I think so. You could make that work.
I'm just seeing if they end up, they want something different.
Right.
Leave that door open.
Yeah, just leaving the door open.
Yes. Do you mind, I don't know, do you need to open that in order for me to just say a couple things?
I would need to open it back up. Okay, at this time, I'll reopen the public hearing for case file LU.
Zero fourteen.
Zero zero one four two zero two four.
And this is Tracy Brown, uh, speaking on back behalf of the property owner. I guess what I was thinking about regarding the fence and the work with the neighbors, I guess my only concern is every neighbor could have a different desire. We don't wanna, I don't think he wants to be in a thing where, okay, this neighbor, we're gonna do this and this. He wants to be a, have a consistent plan and that's why he proposed the wood good neighbor fence and a fence that he can maintain. Um, you know, as I said, we don't know exactly where those existing fences are. They could be a foot on the other person's property or they could actually be on his property. We just don't know where they are. So I guess as you think about maybe the, a condition, um, you know, we proposed good neighbor fence. We're wanting to, you know, work with the neighborhood, but we don't wanna be, as we can word it such that we're not, um, needing to accommodate everybody's interest, if that makes sense. Um, but to, I'm trying to think of how having flexibility, um, would be integrated in or other approved or other, you know, something to that effect.
I was thinking good neighbor or other fence type that is supported by the neighboring community.
Okay. Yeah.
Something of that nature. And that's just, I, I, I don't see where you'd have five neighbors and they don't want five different things. I think eventually there's gonna be two or three of them are gonna pick the same thing and that'd kind of be the end of the discussion.
It's possible, yeah. I mean, if you go out there today, there's probably four different fences.
Right.
And so each of those people who put those fences up had a different idea. Um, it may be more, since there's now something to fence, a reason to fence against, we'll say, they may be more consistent and I think. And I think part of the reason he was proposing the wooden fence because he felt it was more, less penetrable in that sense. It wasn't, and it, you know, it's easier, I think he felt it was easier to maintain. You know, an open chain link is probably the easiest to maintain, but he wanted something that was visually, you know, blocked, the visual. Those slats over time tend to degrade, it's my experience at least, so.
Yeah, I totally understand. I was just coming from a place of thinking, you know, if it's a good neighbor fence and you're trying to be a good neighbor and the neighbors want something different, then try to accommodate that.
Yeah, well, I think he's willing to work with the neighbors to see what, if there's a good solution for that fencing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nell?
So what I understand is that whatever we put into this development is something they have to abide by from here on out until the laws change, right? Or there's another variance. And so he may very well find out that the wood fence is too hard to keep up with the wind. And so should have the option to do a different type of fence.
For the code, he does have different options to put in different types of fences. It's just working with the neighbors.
Right, that would be the change.
Okay.
All right, close?
Let me ask him one question. I was wondering if Mr. Alfred would consider getting a neighbor in.
I can't, I can't take, I'm sorry, technically, I can't take it. Yeah, I can't. It's open for the applicant, for us to ask questions of the applicant is all, sorry.
Can I ask him a question?
You can, out there, you can ask him whatever you want to ask him. I can't control that. I just, technically, my state law...
I don't understand.
Yeah, there's just things that we have to do a particular way.
Okay.
Okay. Close?
Return?
Hang on. Can I call some answers? All right, all those in favor, say if I was saying aye?
Aye. Okay, I come back to the same two major issues I presented two or three meetings ago. This guy's going to miss out on this. Better wait till he's available.
Just talk over. Go ahead, Commissioner Nell.
Okay, I'm coming back to my two major issues from two or three meetings ago, which are the unidentified 206, unit 206, and the exterior staircase on 105, 205. I'm not sure we can do anything about the exterior staircase. Really concerned about it from a safety standpoint, though. If it's, you know, if that's all, if that's according to building code, I can say I'm not sure what we can do about it.
You're referring to the wind and the ice over?
Yeah, ice, especially.
But that's not our wheelhouse.
Yeah. The other thing, the existing apartment on the second story of 106.
Okay.
I'd be prepared to make a motion to revise the findings to make that non-compliant.
To make 106 non-compliant?
Well...
Make the application non-compliant?
The application, entire application. You can't single out one element.
Right. So you would be in support of a denial based on...
Based on exceeding density, I would say.
Because the drawing that we have...
Yes, as far as I'm concerned, everything I'm seeing and reading, basically, I mean, there's more text that calls that an apartment than doesn't call it an apartment. Plus, it's an apartment on the floor plan.
Not to interrupt you, Paul, but just for the record, for clarification, the narrative, the site plan shows 15 dwelling units. If you were to approve it, it would be approved for 15 dwelling units. All permit reviews following this approval would be looking at the number of dwelling units. So if there's a concern in him sneaking in a 16th dwelling unit, please don't make that a part of your decision because I don't believe that would be accurate.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you really felt strongly about this, you could just make a general condition that the application can't exceed the maximum density of 15 units.
Yeah, that's where I was going. So would you be amenable to that, adding a condition that the plans show an unfinished attic space above unit 106 and that the maximum density of the project be 15 units on five?
I'd want to see documentation that 206 has been eliminated, basically.
Well, we would do that, the condition would do that.
It currently exists.
Yeah, the condition would do that. Okay. The condition would accommodate that. You want to see it before you do the condition? Yeah, let's...
I'm going to see it in writing.
Yeah, that's not usually how this happens. Because if we do a modification or a condition, then it is up to the applicant to come back with a new drawing and present that to staff that meets the condition that we put on the project.
Correct, and so a condition like that would come back at the stage of the building permit process. We would calculate and look at the building plans to ensure that there's only 15 dwelling units being developed on site.
Which is a very common time to look at during building permit reviews. We went out to a residential facility just the other day to confirm. The plans kind of showed it could be two separate units. We went onsite to make sure what they were showing or telling us what they were showing was accurate. So if anything looks incorrect at the time of building permit review, we do go onsite to confirm, just so everyone's aware of how that works.
So basically, the condition would be saying the same thing as the requirement for the number of maximum units, right? But then we're not really changing anything, we're just stating that, A, this can't change.
Ken, could you put in here that it cannot be habitable? The city has rights to review at any time, similar to another property we have in City of Cleveland, falls under that one?
It would basically be condition number nine. Would say that the plan is modified for 106 to show the upper-level space to be vacant and unfinished.
Correct, so I really want to be specific here in my conditions. So I would propose, and this is for planning commission to consider, at the time of building permits submitted, the applicant shall show a revised floor plan indicating a maximum density of 15 units.
With the stated modification to 106?
Correct.
Okay. Right? So that becomes nine. And 10 would basically be applicants shall... Wait another second, I can hear, big project for me. Applicants shall solicit input from neighboring properties regarding type of fence to be installed.
How would we make that actionable as proof? As, so all the conditions of approval, generally, we want them kind of marked off when they apply for permits. So typically, it's kind of like a checklist the applicant gives us that we go through looking. What would you want us to see as proof that they've done that? Like, how would we say, like, yeah, checked off?
Basically, he meets with them and they give their input and they, you know, give him a piece of paper or something.
Okay, just like word of mouth?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it'd be that hard to substantiate.
Unless somebody doesn't agree with anything.
Well, that's, we can't control that.
That's true.
I would just like to see whatever screening is done to be something that the neighboring properties are going to be like, okay, this is, you know, works or could work or has the potential of maybe being better than what was originally submitted. And maybe what was submitted will end up being what's better. I just would like them to have the option to give input. Any others? Do we have anything else? Is there mine? And both of mine are based on testimony received at the November 13 planning commission meeting. Ms. Paul?
Could you please repeat that?
The conditions that I'm recommending are based on testimony received at the November 13 planning commission meeting.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay. So I guess at this time, I can't make a motion that I would entertain one with conditions as amended. Finding a fact, final order, and then conditions. Do you want to take the variances separately or just conditions and final fact? Erica? Do you need the conditions separately or just, I mean, do you need the variances separately?
Let's do them separately, in that way, it's very clean.
Okay. Clean is always good. Okay. So we have two variances. Can we take both the variances together?
You can take both the variances together.
Okay. So maybe someone wants to make a motion for both of the variances for LU 00142024? Approving variances as submitted?
Motion to approve variances as submitted.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve variances for case file LU 00142024, Cherry Park Apartments. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Call the board, please.
I don't have the list.
Oh, apologies.
I would if I could.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Leeny?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stathenson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, the next one I'd like to do would be conditions of approval. Okay. And that would be as amended. Our motion for that.
Wondering how to word it.
So what we're looking for would be to approve the amended conditions of approval for case file LU 00142024.
So moved.
Okay. You have a second on that one?
I'll second it.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for conditions of approval as amended, including number nine and number 10 for LU 00142024, Cherry Park Apartments. Any discussion on the motion that's on the table?
Could you repeat the conditions again?
Okay, the conditions are number nine was to amend the site plan?
Condition number nine was to... Let's see here.
At the time of building permits submitted, applicant shall revise floor plans to show 15 dwelling units and 206, is that the unit? 206?
Yeah.
206?
Yeah, unfinished.
And display unit 206 unfinished in the third floor?
Yes.
And then condition number 10 was the applicant shall solicit input on the type of fence from neighbors. Adjacent property owners.
Right. Okay. All right. Any other questions on the motion?
206 is the unit.
It's 206.
206 is the unit you don't want.
Right.
It can't be, it's a...
Right. So it would be the drawing showing
Only 106.
That it's unfinished and all of that.
Okay.
Okay. To go with the narrative. All right, hearing none, call the board, please.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Leeny?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stathenson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. And so based on that, we are looking for a motion for approval of finding a fact, final order, and decision for case file LU 00142024, Cherry Park Apartments. And it would be... And it would be that would be the motion.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for
Oh, sorry.
Do you have a question?
Nope, I am ahead of myself.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Hang on. For case file LU 00142024, final order and decision in finding a fact. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, here we go.
Commissioner Minkoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Leeny?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilcox?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson?
Yes.
Okay. Carried.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We should get an A for thoroughness.
I agree.
That's all I'm going to say. Were you nodding your head to that?
Very thorough.
All right. And so lucky for us, we're not going to have the downtown parking presentation this evening. And so we will move right into staff communications.
Great, thank you. So the next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for December 11th. We'll have the presentation on the Sandy River Shuttle Study and the Downtown Parking Study. In addition, we'll probably have a little CFEC update about next steps as we approach the new year 2025. The Development Code Omnibus went to, had the first reading at council last night, and it will be going back to council for the second reading and adoption on December 10. Your first meeting of the new year will be January 15. We don't have anything scheduled for that meeting at the moment, but I'm thinking maybe it would be good for the commission to get together to talk about upcoming goals for the new year for the commission. And then, as far as community events go, Wendy Wonderland is coming up here on December 7th and 8th in the downtown. And we'll, Santa will be there and we'll have the tree lighting on Sunday. Also, if you're interested in emergency preparedness for you and your families, the city is hosting a class that you can sign up for free on November 20th, and you can go online and sign up for that class. There also, there'll be some freebies too, if you take that class, for emergency preparedness. That's it, as far as staff communications.
Commissioner Minkoff? You're first.
I'm first, thank you. I don't really have any other comments. But thank you to the staff, as always.
Commissioner Wilcox?
A couple of things. This won't occur again for another four years, but
What's that?
There were some issues. There were some issues with campaign signs this year. And I know when they were placed illegally, like in right of ways and such, in Jewish storage, it was free to collect them. But I was wondering, what's the enforcement action possible if they're on private property?
So if signs are located on private property, you know, the property owners, if they're not informed of the signs and they don't want the signs to be there, they have the right to remove the signs. We always tell folks, if you put signs on private property, to contact the property owner first. To make sure that they will be allowed.
What if 10 different candidates contact one property owner and he okay's them?
We're talking about too many times.
We would probably try to educate certain property owners.
So there's really no enforcement available?
Well, there could be based on a complaint.
Yeah, there could be based on a complaint, exactly.
I will say that there were people that put up signs that are not necessarily local Troutdale residents or anything and really didn't have an idea of what the rules were. They're just out there plopping signs up here and there.
Yeah, there were signs for candidates outside, for offices outside Troutdale.
Yeah.
Not just talking state.
Right, I know.
My other thing is, it looks like the Troutdale marijuana measure lost. So I'm curious what are next steps regarding that?
Yeah, we had a conversation, well, first, we just have to wait till the votes are certified. And then our next steps would be to to make changes to the development.
Right, modify it.
Modify it, based on the ballot measure.
What does that mean, based on the ballot measure?
So the ballot measure
Would have to follow state code, right?
Well, right, it, correct, so it would go back to what our code previously stated for
Prior to.
Right. So in the previous code, we allowed marijuana facilities as the conditional use permit with certain standards. And we would bring that back.
But originally, it was only in the industrial area, wasn't it?
It would be what it was before it got unedited and and those things. So it would be the original version that would come back.
Okay, so it has to go back to
Yes, so
Right, it goes back to
It goes back to the, it goes back to the process. It goes back to A, what it originally was. But the process for making that amendment, it's a process. We have to go back through Planning Commission. We have to notify the state and Metro, and then it goes to council for adoption.
But we can't start that process until the election is certified.
Yeah, sure. But you're, okay, so it goes back to A, but you're not obligated to keep it at level A.
Not, I mean, correct.
It could be changed.
It could be changed.
It could be changed.
It could be changed. And Planning and Planning Commission will have that conversation when we bring it back.
Okay.
But that's where it starts.
Okay, nothing else?
Yeah, I just want to mention that you heard what the residents around the development are saying, right? And we, I'm always hearing, because I hang around other political leaders, right? That they want to increase density beyond what we're facing now. And I go back to what I said earlier. I believe that residents will be reactionary to it instead of proactive to it. They won't react until they actually see it happen, right? So it's going to get interesting as we go forward in planning.
I think it, personally, I think every time you develop a vacant lot, it gets interesting. Unless it's like out in no man's land somewhere. If it's adjacent to somebody's property, they're very conservative about it.
Right, that's true.
But also, it's a difficult position, but, you know, there's only X that we can do. We're limited on what we can control.
And I would say that, and this is Commissioner Minkoff, that it is the state and the county mandate to increase housing, to increase and increase housing density. That's what they're all pushing for. And even contrary to what the residents, other residents would like.
I was just going to respond to Rich's comment. It depends who you're talking to also. And there's probably 500 people living in Eagle Ridge that weren't living in Troutdale before that was built. So they were providing an opportunity to live in Troutdale, but they wouldn't have had otherwise.
Right. And developers would like it.
Sure.
And these, these things are never easy, that's why we get to do them. We signed up for the tough stuff.
Yeah, the legislation's going to be made there. The response is going to be here, and we're going to pop right in the middle.
Right, and what I would say, people can, how their voice can be heard is, people that make the legislation need to hear from their constituents. That's how, that's how things change.
I would agree.
Because it's not something that we can, we can control at our level. Law comes down and we have to implement it as best we can.
But realistically, Alex owned a piece of property over here. He divided it. There's a number of houses that backed to this lot that always knew something more than single house was going to go on. Always been planned that it's going to be bigger than what they had.
This was
This might be bigger than what they thought was coming.
And I guess the sad thing is, you know, at the end of the day, it's like it's been zoned this way for a very long time.
Right.
And, you know, it's a tough position for a resident to be in when they find out something's going in. But it's like, this is what this is set up for. This is a use that's approved for this area and that property, and so that's where it is. Okay. I just want to say, you know, I think next meeting, you've decided to move on.
I won't be at the December meeting.
Yes, you will.
I mean, the January meeting.
It's all right. But congratulations.
Maybe it's January meeting.
Congratulations on your appointment to council. And what that will mean is the alternate, what we call that, to fill that slot. And that's how that works.
The lobbying?
Yes. Yeah. And it's, I mean, selfishly, I could say, you know, if the election would have gone differently, we could have practically cleaned house on the Planning Commission before it was all over with. And luckily, a lot of the experience that we have and the professionals that we have doing this work will still be around. The, as Ms. Palmer said, the Omnibus cleared the first hurdle. And so that's a good sign. And we needed to get that done before the end of the year. We also wanted to do it before the council changed. And, but we did inform them that there would be a mini bus, a short bus, coming later with more code amendments. I think I called it the short bus, didn't I?
I think you did.
I like that. You should keep that terminology.
Pardon me?
You should keep that terminology, I like it.
And so I just want to say thank you to everyone that went out and voted. No matter how the election goes, it's at least your voice has been heard. And those things are important as we shape the community and as a whole. Thank you, staff. This one was a really tough project to get over the finish line. You guys did a lot of hard work on it, and so thank you. Especially, I think you ended up having to turn this around over the weekend.
Hats off to
Yeah.
Planner Remsda over there.
Thank you for all your extra work to get this done. We appreciate it. Appreciate all, and I appreciate all of you guys, all the time that you've got into this. And not much gets by this group. It's a good bunch. And so with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Did you check to see if he had any?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I asked him earlier.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
So here it is.
Yeah, come on.
One thing I noticed was that on the voting, 1,000 people voted on marijuana that didn't vote for a mayor.
I noticed that too.
Yeah, I noticed.
Yeah, I did notice.
It was more important to vote on marijuana than on the leader.
900 differs.
Yeah.
You got to have your priorities.
Yeah.
And if you take the number
Good observation.
Yeah. If you take the number of people
Priorities.
voted for the mayor and divide it by four, a lot of people didn't vote on the city council.
I'm looking forward to Commissioner Wilcox's breakdown of the election.
Yeah, that will be interesting. You haven't sat through one of these yet. It's quite an analysis. All right.
All right, that's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, we have a second?
I second.
All right.
Thank you, too.
Second by Commissioner Minkoff. All those in favor, second by saying aye?
Aye.
Close? Okay, we are adjourned for this evening. Thank you all very much.